All members present, Councilmember Eric Range is absent. And I am here visiting remotely. But please rise if you're able for the pledge and after you stand, please remain standing for a moment of silence. I thank the agents, to the flag, to the republic, which...
...invisible.
I just wanted to remember a few Madison residents that we lost over the past few weeks. Johnny Thomas died on June 16th. He was born on July 29th, 1937, in San Fernando Trinidad, West Indies. He received his formal education from San Fernando Boys' Holy Catholic School in San Fernando. He started his life as a professional boxer and in 1965, however, Johnny migrated to the United States. There, on the advice of his adoptive mother, elder Callie Warner, he returned to school and successfully graduated with an interior decorating diploma. He opened his first business, J and B Decorators, in Queens in the 70s and was there until the 90s. In 92, he moved to New Jersey and after several years, he opened reupholstery restoration in Madison, right there on Central Avenue. He's probably the only professional boxer to ever become an upholsterer. He also taught multiple upholstery classes in New Jersey for the adult schools over a 24-hour, 24-year period. He introduced about 5,500 students to the fine art of upholstery. He retired from teaching in 2017. He leaves his daughter Crystal and his son Bertlin. And then Sabina, Nina Papa Thomas, longtime Madison resident, passed away June 17th. She was 89, survived by her two sons Jim and Harry and the daughter Epi. Five grandchildren, one great-grandson. She was predeceased by her husband Harry in 2008. She was born in Greece, May 4th, 1934, raised in Greece during World War II with her four siblings. And as a young woman, Nina worked on the family's Olive Grove and helped support the family. She married Harry and the couple immigrated to the United States in 1958, settled in Jersey City. She worked as a seamstress and in 65, Harry became the co-owner of Nordo Steiner in Madison and moved her family to Madison. She enjoyed going back to Greece every summer with her husband and three children. And then also Mary Irene Chippaletti passed away June 12th, aged 98, just two months shy of her 99th birthday. Born in Netcon in 1924, she grew up in a family of eight. She was introduced to her beloved husband, the late Michael John Chippaletti, through Michael's sister. The couple married in 1946, moved to Madison shortly after to raise their family. They first lived above the family delicatessen, Chippies, which is now where Main Street Subs is, before settling on their home in Dean Street. She also worked in Madison HP Higgs Company for several years. They were longtime parishioners at St. Vincent Martyr. She was preceded by her husband, 70 years. She was survived by her sons, Michael and Richard, and two granddaughters and three great-grandchildren. Let us take a moment to remember Johnny Thomas, Nina Papa Thomas, and Mary Chippaletti and let us pass our thoughts on to the families and friends they leave behind. Excuse me, second here. All right, we have no minutes for approval. So let me get to my... Welcome, everyone, for those that braved the thunderstorms. And it looks like it could be more to come, so thank you for coming out tonight. A few things that... A few things that have been going on last two weeks. On Tuesday, June 13th, Councilmembers John Hoover and John Forte joined me as we cut the ribbon at Infinity Credit Union. And it's great to have Infinity come to Madison. And then on June 15th, we had a ceremonial planting of the first 100 trees that will be donated by the Madison Rotary Club in honor of their 100th anniversary. This donation could not have occurred at a better time as storms and emerald ash borer and other issues have been decimating our borough trees. The first tree was planted at Lucy V. Anthony Field. More trees will be planted there with some also street trees going in downtown and other sites where the 100 trees will go. So I want to thank Rotary for their 100 years of service above self and this very generous donation to kick off their next 100 years. And on June 20th, I attended the Board of Education meeting as they were recognizing Mark Schoritz for his work as our superintendent. Regrettably, I had to leave before he was actually recognized, but I do want to thank Mark for his dedication to the students of Madison and wish him the best as he takes on the leadership of the Ridgewood School District. And a reminder, business-wise, we are only having one meeting in July. There'll be no meeting on July 10th, so our next meeting after tonight will be July 24th. And now we'll move on to reports from committees. Community affairs, Council President Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Director of Business Development and the Director of Business Development Downtown, the Madison Farmers Market is now open on Thursdays. Please visit all the terrific vendors in Buckfield from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. The season continues through May 16th, November 16th, and will feature Live Music Weekly. Downtown Concert Series, held at the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts, will begin with Mahomet D. and the Vexations on Friday, February's July 7th. The concerts are from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Please bring your chair and plan to have dinner or dessert downtown. Bottle Hill Day will be held on Saturday, October 7th, this fall. Sponsorship and vendor information has been published and is available on RoseNet. Starbucks has opened its new location at the Madison Plaza Shopping Center and the new pastry shop and cafe Delicious Macarons, located on 82 Madison Street. Madison Main Street is now open for business. Please visit and welcome them to Madison. Chamber of Commerce, the August Sidewalk Sales Days will be from August 24th through September 2nd. The Madison Community Arts Center is up on the walls at the Roseum, which is, by the way, the display of the... Five alums, and includes five alums from the Cubert School of Dover, featuring comic book and graphic novel art. Gallery hours are posted on the MadisonNJArts.org website under the Madison Arts Center tab. The show ends on July 2nd. A call for visual art has been sent to Madison-based artists for exhibition in the gallery, walls from August 14th through October 15th. Another Pride Communit event, Divas in Mind, featuring very good Maestro Elia, is scheduled for Sunday, July 2nd at 5:00 p.m. The Madison Red Cross Blood Drive will be held at the center on June 28th from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. Appointments can be made at the Red Cross Blood Services website. The next Open Mic will take place on July 5th at 8:00 p.m. The Literary Open Mic is held in partnership with Arts by the People. The First Rose Pavilion Outdoor Concert Summer Concert will be held on Friday, July 30th, June 30th, rather, at 6:00 p.m. In case of rain, the concert will move indoors. The first band up is the Big Beat Big Band. From January 1st through January 1st, 2003, through today, 325 individual events have been attended by 6,300 people at the Art Center. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And now we move on to Public Works of Engineering. Move to Eric.
Thank you, Mayor. The Engineering Department reports that the Cook Avenue parking lot construction documents are being rebid and those are now available at the Borough Clerk's Office. There will be a bid opening date of July 25th at 10:00 a.m. The Green Avenue pedestrian crosswalks will have a construction start now of Wednesday, July 5th, pushed back slightly. I just, you know, in light of some recent news that I read, I want to underscore how important it is that we continue to improve our pedestrian safety in town. The Governor's Highway Safety Association, which tracks pedestrian deaths in the United States, reported this month that pedestrian deaths have reached a 40-year high, that we are now, we have reached the rates of deaths of pedestrians that we had in 1981 and that 7,500 pedestrians are killed in the U.S. every year by drivers. So this is a stark reminder that we have a long way to go to improve safety for pedestrians. I'm glad that we have a Complete Streets Committee that is committed to improving safety in Madison. Waverly Place reconstruction, planning concepts have been completed and final design documents are now being requested so that state funding commitments can proceed. It'll be exciting to see the redesign of Waverly Place come to fruition in the next couple of years. And lastly, we have ongoing sewer lining construction project. This week, work will take place on Rose Avenue, weather permitting. Residents should pay attention to contractor notices and public reminders regarding the sewer lining procedures, especially while contractor vehicles are active on those streets. The DPW reminds us that the recycling center hours are Tuesdays and Fridays from 8:00 a.m. to noon and on Saturdays from 8:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. They are doing work on the catch basins around town, prepping them for the streets that will be milled over later reconstructed this summer. And finally, the Shade Tree Management Board and the Environmental Commission heard a report from Lisa Jordan over the last couple of weeks. She is the Director of the Spatial Data Center at Drew University. She reported to those bodies on the tree canopy loss in Madison based on new data from the U.S. Forest Service. The data show that tree canopy coverage in Madison declined by 113 acres in the 10 years between 2011 and 2021. That's an annualized loss of 11 acres of canopy per year. More data that shows that we have work to do here in Madison to replace tree loss. I think it's important to note that this data does not include this recent spate of ash tree deaths, and so the numbers are certainly going to go up in the next couple of years as those trees that are being removed get added to the tally. So we need to redouble our efforts to plant trees in town to replace the year-over-year losses that we're experiencing in our canopy. That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. And now Utilities and Public Safety, Mr. Landgren.
Thank you, Mayor. For the Electric Department, on Thursday, June 15th, the Stanbury Crew was called out at 6:00, 4:00 a.m. for a power outage at Hamilton Street caused by a bird. Power was restored by 7:15 that morning. The week of June 19th, the American Electrical Testing worked on the electric... The week of June nineteenth, the American Electrical Testing worked on the electric department to complete the repairs on our transformer at the James Park substation. The department also set a new pole on the corner of Ridgedale Avenue and Cook Avenue and transferred all equipment. The Electric Department is pleased to advise that they have received all of the Victorian lamp posts and equipment necessary for the Cook Avenue parking lot project. That's very good, Deuce, that'll look nice when it's done. Okay, for the Water Department, a six-inch water main with a two-inch blow-off valve on Lee Avenue Drive went bad and created a water leak at the border of Madison and Florham Park. During the repair, a six-inch valve, the six-inch valve was shut down in order to isolate the leak. It also went bad and broke off in the position and had to be replaced before the water service could be restored. And they were to remind us that watering your lawn during the high summer hours weighs fifty percent of the water due to evaporation. It is sufficient to water the average lawn only twice a week. Okay, for the Fire, the Police Department. The Madison Police Department is well on its way for planning the two thousand and twenty-three National Night Out. We have a meeting with the stakeholders and Department National Night Out Committee members to finalize festivities on Waverly Place. The date of the National Night Out will be August first. We are also compiling a list of sponsors. If you'd like to be a sponsor for this year's National Night Out or wish to get more information on the event, please contact Corporal Stephanie Aquino at nine-seven-three-five-nine-three-three-oh-three-four, or email thenationalnightoutno@rosenet.org. Okay, and then finally, for the Fire Department, the Fire Department was notified earlier this week that they were awarded a FEMA grant in the amount of twenty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars. The Borough, as part of the grant agreement, must also contribute one thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars toward the items to be purchased for a grant purchase of, for a grant purchase of thirty thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars. The grant money was requested for and must be used to purchase a Lucas chest compression device and patient defibrillators. The Department Fire Pumps also had the annual flow testing. Today, by a third party, all three pumps passed with no issues. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and now Health, Mr. Harold Kudus.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Hello, everybody, Council. Not too much to report from the Board of Health. A few updates, just to advise the Borough what's going on now that the CDC dropped the status of COVID. We still have our nurses checking newsreels from the CDC to see if there is any new cases of communicable diseases, and they check right away and try to check the path of the infections. The Health Department still has COVID-nineteen vaccines available for both adults and pediatrics. Homebound individuals in the Borough can call the Health Department to schedule an appointment to receive a COVID vaccine at home. There is also available in Boomfield, adult and child vaccination clinics on Wednesdays, if anybody wants to drive there, if they need to. We had a problem with the person who managed the registrar duties in Madison, and Liz Osborne is also a deputy registrar, so she will be covering for certain health. I'm not really sure exactly, Liz, what you're going to be doing, but I know you got it covered. And then, I guess the highlight of what we're doing is this animal census that I've been talking about for the last two months. We have our two interns who mapped out the Borough already. They reviewed the people who already registered that have pets, so they didn't have to go and visit their homes. They started visiting the districts in town. They've already covered five of the twelve. They are knocking on doors with people who have been known to have pets, but have proven that they have updated rabies shots and no other vaccines. And then when they can't enter into a home or reach the homeowner, they've been making phone calls and leaving messages. So they'll be doing this now through the beginning of August. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, and Finance Borough Clerk, Mr. Forte.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Accounts Payable Department, I would like to talk a few moments about the approval of the bill list, which is right here, which happens at the end of every council meeting. A day or two after each council meeting, the Accounts Payable Department issues checks for payments to our vendors. Before those checks are issued, the council receives a bill list which details the payments. There are a couple of purchase orders on this evening's bill list that are worth noting. First is a purchase order for eight thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents for gasoline. The Borough has bulk storage tanks for fuel, and as such, we make larger purchases with preferred pricing. This price we paid on this invoice was three dollars and two cents per gallon for regular gasoline. The second item is actually two purchase orders totaling eighty-eight thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-two cents. This represents our monthly cost for collecting and disposing of the residential curbside garbage. From the Finance Department, the audit has been completed and can now be found in the Finance Department's section of RoseNet. The consent agenda at the end of this meeting includes voting on Resolution one ninety-dash twenty-two-three, which pertains to the council accepting the twenty-twenty-two audit. This resolution is required by state statute, and it certifies that each of the elected officials has received the audit, which is this nice, big, thick book. The state requires that the chief financial officer prepare a corrective action plan after the audit is completed. The corrective action plan is in response to recommendations that are made in the audit, and there will be a short discussion on the plan this evening. As I mentioned at the last meeting, there were two small audit recommendations this year, one on segregation of duties and the other on collection of pet license fees. It's important to be transparent and take time to discuss the audit and corrective action plan in public. Fortunately, the Borough does not have any significant audit issues. Finally, the monthly payment to the Board of Education was three million eight hundred and sixty thousand eighty-two dollars and three cents, and was wired on June fifteenth. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and now we move on to Communications and Petition.
Yes, Mayor. The Mayor and Council received an email dated June sixteenth from Stephen McCann of Green Avenue regarding a pending application before the Historic Preservation Commission.
All right, thank you very much, and now we move on to Invitation for Public Comment. This is the first of two. This one is limited to items that are on our Agenda Discussions and the resolutions that are part of the consent agenda. These are the Agenda Discussions that are tonight, and you may comment on. The Environmental Commission will be doing a presentation on Madison's water. This is a presentation they've done to various boards, such as the Zoning Board, to help educate people on the sources and our aquifer. And then we also have a presentation on the two thousand and twenty-three Climate Action Annual Report, which is part of the enabling resolutions to have an annual report. And the, just mentioned by Council Member Forte, we will have the two thousand and twenty-two municipal audit and corrective action plan that will be presented. And these are the resolutions that you may comment on, resolution, and these are also part of the consent. Resolution one eighty-eight is authorizing a termination released with an agreement between the Masonic, Madison Masonic Lodge and the Borough of Madison. This will enable them to sell the building to a developer that has promised to save and preserve the building, the great source structure. Resolution one eighty-nine is a renewal of various liquor licenses. Resolution one ninety is, as mentioned already, is a resolution accepting the two thousand and twenty-two audit. Resolution one ninety-one is approving the two thousand and twenty-two action, corrective action plan, which we'll hear about shortly. Resolution one ninety-two is authorize execution of a grant agreement with Hartley Dodge Foundation Trustees to fund a portion of the renovations of East Wing and Hartley Dodge Memorial. As you well know, that the Hartley Dodge Trustees oversee the trust that was established by Geraldine Dodge, and they will be making substantial support to our East Wing renovation. Resolution one ninety-three is awarding Contractor Seal Power LLC for Energy Audit. They are the firm that's currently providing these energy audits, and they are forty-nine dollars per residential unit, and I think I saw Peter Kishima in the audience, who can speak very eloquently about the value of that audit. Resolution one ninety-four is authorizing two hundred and fifty thousand NJ DOT municipal application for Goldwood Avenue, Longview Avenue, and Valley Road, Millian and Overlay Projects. This is authorizing the grant application. Resolution one ninety-five is awarding bids for the purchase of new unused distribution pole, top capacitor banks, and this is the amount of a hundred and eighty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars, and funded through ordinance twenty-nine dash twenty-two-three. Resolution one ninety-six is authorizing change order requests from Volors Escavating and Construction, so the amount of twenty-one thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars to bring their total contract to four hundred and seventy-five thousand for the MRC Accessible Trail Project. This was funded through ordinance thirty-five dash twenty-two-one. Resolution one ninety-seven authorizing the submission of a grant application, New Jersey Division of Energy Buildings Up Grant Program. Resolution one ninety-eight is rejecting bids for the Wellbee Facility Improvement Bid Project. Both bids came well above the budget amount, so it will be, bids will be rejected, and we'll go out again. And then Resolution one ninety-nine, or one ninety, wait, I can't, my eyes are bad now. One ninety-nine, yes, is an adjustment to the insertion of revenue and budget for two thousand and twenty-three. We always have to do these when we receive a grant, which is, so this is a good news thing, and this is to accept the twenty-thousand-dollar grant, Sustainable Jersey Grants. You may comment on those resolutions or the three Agenda Discussions. If you wish to comment on those things, please step forward, state your name, address, write the same on the clipboard, and state the Agenda Item or Resolution you're commenting on, and try to keep your comments to three minutes, but we will give you a one-minute grace and stop you at four. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to our Agenda Discussion. Invite Claire Whitcomb, our Chair of the Environmental Commission, to step forward to do the presentation. Welcome, Claire.
Thank you, Mayor. So there was a very long drought, and then it decided to rain, and it decided to rain like heck, is all I can say. And, Tom, you should see Keep Street, it's totally flooded with that culvert. So this is our weather. It's flash droughts, really heavy rains, and you would think that all of this rainfall would be just a boon for the aquifer. Well, actually, it's not, because it's not staying where we want it. It's this water that's rushing into the stormwater system, and it goes to the Passaic River. It does not get captured. Next slide, please. Okay, so meet the Buried Valley Aquifer. This is where your water comes from. It's an underground water system that serves thirty-one municipalities. It's this area right here, this light blue area. It's quite large. It covers areas of Morris, Essex, and Somerset, and Union Counties, and the Drew Forest is quite in the middle of it. And the Passaic River Coalition did a report, which is in nineteen eighty-six, on the Buried Valley Aquifer and got it designated as a sole-source aquifer, which establishes a duty of care and protection. It also enables us collectively to apply for federal funding if it becomes contaminated or there's some issues. And the key to the aquifer health is trees, and as Rachel mentioned, we're losing trees. Next slide, please. This is another view of the aquifer. Basically, it's buried river valleys. Until I started working on the Drew Forest Campaign, I really didn't understand what the aquifer was. I thought it was like noy pond underground, but it's buried river valleys that are covered in glacial rock, and the Madison Water Department has to drill to get the water. And as Jim will tell you, anytime he presents on the Water Department, in eighteen ninety, the water bubbled out. It was actually a different well, but still. Kathy Cacavelli and I went down to the Water Department, and from the fifties and the sixties, the water level has gone down in the aquifer on our current wells by over twenty-five feet. It's very hard to get data on this, but the water levels are definitely sinking, and you can look around you and you know why. We're losing tree canopy, we're losing forests, we're increasing development, and everybody loves lawns, you know? The meadows of people's childhood are gone, and also, you know, you walk around, like I did this morning, people are watering their lawns today. So, next slide, please. How does the water get into the aquifer? The short answer is slowly. It has to percolate down a long way through soil, rock, and glacial debris, and the best aquifer areas in Madison are forested. And the thing about trees is, you know, they go out like this, and they break the rainfall, and they stop it from just streaming off. Lawns are pretty bad at aquifer recharge. They're better than cement, they're not great. And asphalt and lawns have a lot of chemicals. The guy up the hill from me was fertilizing his lawn today, which seems like a super bad idea, because all that stuff's going to go in my yard, but asphalt leaches a lot of chemicals that go into the water system on days like today. The Drew Forest, fifty-three acres, purifies, it's called an ecosystem service, seventy-one point five million gallons of water, and it's worth one point five million dollars. So these are natural services that our environment provides if we don't pave it over. Next slide, please. Madison's water goes to four watersheds, worth four point three square miles. We're, also, this data is due to Lisa Jordan's GIS mapping class. We're eighty-six percent developed, and we're fifty percent residential, forty percent medium density. Next slide, please. This is one of Lisa's students' maps of impervious coverage in Madison. You can see the red areas are largely downtown, and the yellow, pale-orange areas are open space, Summerhill Park, MRC, and Drew. And again, trees, these are the areas where we have the most tree coverage, and we have the best aquifer recharge. Next slide, please. So all that impervious coverage on the map, how much does it add up to? Well, it's four hundred and eighty acres as of two hundred and sixteen. It was a twenty percent increase from two thousand and one to twenty sixteen. There is no more recent data. That four hundred and eighty acres are twice the size of our open space that we have in town. And in the same time period, we've lost two hundred and seventy-six acres of trees, which is equivalent to one-third the size of the Luana Cup Brook Reservation. Next slide. Okay, this is two views of what happened after Hurricane Ida. On the right, you have the Drew Forest, which, forests, because there's leaf litter and tree roots and natural debris, they are like sponges, they absorb water. On the left, you have Central Avenue School being pumped out. Seventy homes in town required the Fire Department after Hurricane Ida, and with all of these weather events, we're increasing town expenses. These are hidden, hidden things that disrupt the budget. And as you've seen today, climate change has actually altered the amount of rain that the atmosphere holds, which is why it didn't rain like this earlier, but it holds seven percent more water with each degree of warming. So what do we do about all this? Next slide, please. Oh, you did it, okay. Green infrastructure is helpful. Basically, not paving and reducing size of projects is a better solution, but there is pervious paving at Anywhere, which was formerly Reology. The YMCA has a porous concrete walkway. There's, Atlantic Health in Marstown has a totally pervious driveway that looks like a normal asphalt thing. Three forty-five Madison had part pervious driveway that they had to redo because pervious pavement needs, requires some maintenance. because pervious pavement requires some maintenance so it doesn't get clogged. It requires a different kind of paving. And so it has to be really, with all of green infrastructure, maintenance is the key to its success. Rain gardens, again, there's a green roof, and rain gardens and meadow at Anywhere. But if you don't weed the rain gardens, like we've seen at the MRC, then they just, then they get. So they're not doing their job. There are blue roofs that were being discussed for Central Avenue. Ask her, are they on both projects? The one you approved? Okay, well, a blue roof is basically like a holding tank on a roof, and it slows the amount of water that is released. And in Central Avenue, all that's just going into the gutter, though I think one of the apartment complexes, it might have gone into the stormwater system directly. Rain gardens are being planned for Cook Avenue, and Sustainable Madison Advisory Committee applied for a grant for municipal green infrastructure study and a rain garden project, which is predicted to be at the MRC. Next. So these are some things you can do in your own home. You can plant native trees, they're better than Chinese and other trees. You can shrink your lawn. And this is an easy thing to do, is like, look where your gutters are going. This is my rain barrel here. That gutter goes underground to the street. So I put the rain barrel on that location so I can catch 55 gallons of water and use it for my garden. We can all really consider deeply when an impervious coverage comes before a zoning planning board or other areas. You know, we give away impervious coverage variances often. And finally, we can save the Drew Forest. This is a map that the Drew Forest team created. It shows, you know, the aquifer with the names of the towns. And if you have a better magnifying glass, you can see that there's seven towns that have passed resolutions to protect the forest and additional environmental commissions. And the range of where they are is like Mountain Lakes is, I can't show you, but it's up there. Caldwell is over there. You know, we have Chatham Borough, Chatham Township. But all of these towns are united by a common issue, which is water protection. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Claire. Excellent report and very educational. Counselor comments or questions? And the only chair I can see is Eric's chair, which doesn't help me much. So I'll just ask you to go around the table if you have any comments. If not, we'll move on to the next. All right.
Claire, sorry we're going around the table, Tom. Thank you, Claire. That was a great presentation. It was comprehensive and very clear. And I just want to thank you for spelling out the facts for us. I appreciate it.
Claire, I did have a question, the rain barrels. Years ago, I forget which organization in town actually either gave them out or sold them, and we had one at our house. And it was very good for watering the gardens, especially in the hot weather. You know, obviously not wasting water. Where can you get them these days? Or is there an organization that's going to give them out or sell them?
Well, the Environmental Commission used to sell them, but we weren't really happy with our vendor. And the one I got from that sale actually cracked, and they didn't have a lot of education about how to install it. But I'll help you, I just got a replacement at Home Depot for $100. It was pretty easy, and it works fine.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I was going to comment, Claire, first thanks very much, but I remember when I was on the NBCs, and we put together our resource index and the...
Sorry. Okay, thanks, Claire.
Much better.
Yeah, you hear me now, Mayor?
I can, yes, thank you.
I want you to be lost in Nantucket. Okay. So I was just commenting that when I was on the Environmental Commission, we did a resource index upgrade, and we had mapped out how the different open spaces in town also benefit the aquifer. We have this annual water report. I don't know how to get the information out to the community because probably not that many people in the community that are going to be watching our meeting, or if it makes it into the paper, hopefully they'll read that. But I think this goes to every town, every home. Does this annual water quality report go to every home, Jim?
People got a QR code to scan.
Yeah, there's a QR code over there too in the middle.
That's what was sent.
Oh, that's what was sent, just the QR code?
A nice, big, shiny, blue mailer that hopefully caught people's eye. But then it has the QR code to click through to the...
I got like 22 magazines this week on my kitchen counter, I didn't see that, honestly. But I got to pay more attention. But maybe some of what you just told us could be in here also. Because people do glance at this. They are pretty concerned, just to get the message out because it's very important. We'll know not to water on rainy days, be careful with our fertilizer, the obvious things.
That, I mean, that's a borough ordinance, and I think that the council talks about it regularly, and the Madison Eagle publishes that regularly. It's a hard message to, it's just a hard message. It's a culture shift, really. I mean, we're used to turning on the tap and having...
Good water.
Water, and not worrying about it. And it's not like it's an emergency, but we have to pay attention because these droughts are really kind of alarming. And we're getting a warning signal now, and we're not in, you know, we can still do stuff. But thank you, yes, I got the QR code.
Sure.
I have a question, Claire. Thank you for a great report. Just a quick question, what's the interplay between drywells and the aquifer? I know we tend to put drywells in as a remedy for impervious coverage, but you're talking a lot about rain gardens, and is there a preference?
You would really have to talk to engineering about that. I mean, I think that, I think that, you know, dream scenario is not to need the treatment, you know, that you have enough. You don't need, is it a variance situation?
Well, typically, when we're requiring drywells, and for new construction as well, they do go in.
So if you can not need the variance, that's the best scenario. Drywells, I don't think are bad, they do filter up water, am I right, Rachel?
The issue often is that they require maintenance. Over time, they fill up with silt and dirt, and they stop doing their job of helping the water reinfiltrate into the soil. There is talk about, you know, operations and maintenance plan should be provided with the drywell, but having the follow-up, you know, with an owner in the future, it's really difficult to make sure they continue to work the way they were designed. So...
And I...
Go ahead, Mayor.
Go ahead. As I was going to say, the other thing with a drywell is it's typically designed for normal rain. So a day like this, a drywell can quickly get overwhelmed, and now the water is overflowing and ended up the storm system, as opposed to the unbounded drywell of the Drew Forest, which can collect that water even on days like this and filter it back down.
I think the other thing that boards really need to be vigilant about is tree removal and also planning construction so that the equipment... So it's actually realistic that the equipment isn't going to sit on the tree roots, which is going to kill it. I mean, I know it's in the ordinance that you can't do that, but builders do it all the time. You know, they get their permit, and they just put the stuff, park the tractor under the tree. So we have to protect the trees and our tree canopy at the same time we look at, you know, the growth and the future of our town. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Thanks again, Claire, greatly appreciate it for carving out the time. We will now move on to the 2023 Climate Action Annual Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council colleagues, and hello to the public. Thanks for coming out to our rainy meeting tonight and for taking a few minutes to listen to this report on some highlights of the 2023 Climate Action Annual Report. I want to give you some context here. There is a full-length report that will be published on RoseNet tonight, together with these highlights. So what I'm going to try to do tonight is just give a high-level summary of the findings. And hopefully, what we're doing here is setting a recurring pattern where every year we're going to have an annual report like this to update the borough and the administration, the residents, on how we're doing. Next slide, please. So just a quick refresher, Madison had a very busy year this year getting in gear for our climate action process. We adopted 12 climate goals, nine climate actions, and we reported 10 work in progress items, all of which reduce greenhouse gas emissions and increase our resiliency as we adapt to a changed climate. This annual report describes Madison's advancement last year in 2022 towards those goals and actions. So this is a how are we doing report. So as I said, this presentation is some of the highlights of the metrics and progress that are in the full report. No action is requested of the governing body with this presentation, this is for information only. But based on these findings, the Climate Action Committee is developing proposed 2024 climate action recommendations to help Madison continue on the path to achieve its climate goals. Next slide. So here's a graph that may look familiar. This is Madison's energy-related carbon footprint. And as a reminder, we have an 80 by 50 goal to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions 80% by 2050. So we are in the first year of a, you know, nearly 30-year process. If you look at this chart, you can see that 2022 doesn't look too different from 2018 or 2019. We see there was a dip in 2020, really driven by the drop in vehicular travel during COVID. The main takeaway from this chart, the gray shows the use of gasoline and fuels in vehicles, and the blue shows the use of methane gas in buildings to heat our homes, our buildings, and heat our hot water. Those are the two big contributors to our fossil fuel use. And so we want to recommend that Madison continues to prioritize vehicles and buildings as we seek to drive down our energy costs and our greenhouse gas emissions. Next slide. So these are the five objectives that we identified to sort of group our climate goals and climate actions. These are the five categories that we've identified to plan work for this long-term plan. So we're looking to, as I mentioned in the previous slide, reduce transportation emissions, accelerate clean renewable energy, that is to say, make sure that the power we're using in town is from renewable sources. We want to improve energy efficiency and affordability and reduce building emissions through electrifying, so getting away from burning gas in our buildings and switching to high-efficiency all-electric systems. And now that we're facing this changed climate, we need to build climate-resilient communities and conserve natural resources, as Claire's presentation very eloquently showed. Next slide. So in the full-length report, for each of those objectives on the previous slide, we reiterate Madison's goals, we report the metrics, how are we doing? We update progress on the climate actions that the council approved, and we update work in progress. This is a long report if we do that for each of those objectives. So for tonight's presentation, I've just selected a handful of goals with either metrics or actions or progress for each one, just to give you a flavor of the content of the full report. Next slide. So the first one is the municipal fleet. The goal was that by 2025, 25% of our total non-emergency light-duty municipal mileage would be from plug-in electric vehicles, and 100% of that mileage would be from EVs by 2035. So this is a great number to report. You can see here that right now, as of last year, 9% of our mileage is from our two Chevy Bolts that we procured in 2022. So out of 55,000 miles that our 16 non-emergency light-duty vehicles logged, 9% of that is with plug-in electric vehicles. And excitingly, at our last meeting, the council authorized the purchase of a third Chevy Bolt, which will also go to the Building Department for inspections, which will further improve this number. So we went from 0 to 9% in one year, great metric, and one that we obviously have a lot of control over and save a lot of money when we switch to EVs and cut down our gas bills. Next. Here's another metric, grid reliability is very important. As we talk about transitioning more building systems and vehicles to the electric grid, we need to be sure that we're equipping our grid to maintain its high level of reliability. We know that Madison prides itself on its level of service and reliability for our grid, and we need to keep that high level, even as the load and the demand increases, both from renewables that are coming onto the grid and more use of the grid, higher loads. So what we've done here is started to track outages. We had tracked this previously in previous years, then there was a little bit of a drop-off in reporting. But what we see here is that Madison compares well to neighboring utilities. These two charts show the total minutes of outages. And you can see that Madison, in the blue line, does quite well compared to PSCNG and to JCPL. Next slide. Now we're going to change gears and look at some actions and progress. This goal that is going to help us with our fossil fuels and greenhouse gas emissions from buildings has to do with reducing the amount of fuels for space and water heating by 90% to a level of 1 million therms for all Madison buildings by 2050. So this is a long goal, and it's going to be a gradual process as old systems that rely on methane gas and heating oil are replaced with new high-efficiency heat pump systems. So what is the climate action that was adopted? The goal here was to implement a residential energy efficiency outreach campaign so that building owners, whether they're residents, commercial business owners that own and operate their properties, would have all the information they needed to improve energy efficiency in their buildings, to plan ahead, to select new, cleaner, healthier, modern, and cheaper equipment when their old equipment becomes obsolete. And we've made some good progress on this just in one year. We had a really popular green home energy forum back in April that was well-attended. We had a lot of experts come and speak about different systems and options for homeowners. As the mayor mentioned, on tonight's consent agenda resolution, we are awarding a contract to reestablish the program for discounted home energy audits with a third-party provider. I had an audit a couple of years ago, and it turned into a complete weatherization and electrification project at my house. And I know several people in the audience have also had these audits and found them to be really transformative. So we're happy to be bringing that back. In 2023, we're going to be launching an energy efficiency resources page on RoseNet, similar to the solar PV efficiency, PV hub that we have now. And we're in the process of submitting an application to the U.S. Department of Energy's Buildings Upgrade Prize, which is a prize that we are pursuing to help Madison plan, publicize, and test a local program for energy efficiency in building electrification. This would be a huge boon if we won this prize because we could implement some of these ideas locally and hopefully help non-investor-owned utilities in New Jersey, other towns like Madison that supply their own electricity, scale up and do something like what we would like to test here. Next slide. The last one is for resiliency. So resiliency is about changing to adapt to the climate that we are already facing. And the four ways that we aim to do that are to decrease the effects of increased precipitation and stormwater, mitigate increased temperatures, which continue to climb, identify and address social vulnerabilities, because we know there are some members of the community that are more vulnerable to the impacts of climate change, and to strive for health equity so that everyone has a chance here to stay healthy and be well as we deal with the impacts of climate change. So some of the work in progress that we're happy to report on is the $20,000 grant that was awarded to Madison for green infrastructure planning and implementation. As Claire mentioned, the idea there is to come up with a comprehensive approach to planning and creating a policy for green infrastructure in Madison. And the plans for the Cook Avenue parking lot include extensive planted areas with integrated rain gardens and stormwater management. So it'll be great to have a kind of showcase of green infrastructure right in the heart of downtown. And lastly, another progress item is to under-strive for health equity is that Sustainable Jersey, which is a certifying organization in the state that ranks towns on their sustainability actions, has a Best Practices for Local Boards of Health action that Madison is pursuing. actions, has a Best Practices for Local Boards of Health action that Madison is pursuing. So that's anticipated to be approved during this upcoming certification cycle this year. So this was a real sort of high-level summary. I hope it gives you a flavor of the kind of information and the format of information that you will find in the full report. I'll just give you a quick summary on the last slide. So our conclusions are that we are taking tangible steps towards our climate goals. There's a lot of work in progress. The full annual report has more information for anyone that would like to learn more about the work that's going on and where maybe we didn't stack up as well. I picked the municipal fleet because 9% over 0 was great, but some actions are either hard to measure or we have no tangible data yet. And that's kind of the takeaway for this whole report. This is a 30-year plan, and we don't have any clear data yet that we have made significant increases or decreases in emissions or improvements in resiliency. So that's to be expected. This is the first year of a long-term plan, and the takeaway here is that if we don't take this action now, if we don't start now, we have no chance of making a difference. We can't wait 25 years and then transform every system in five years. We need to take small steps now and make steady incremental process, progress to reach these goals. And finally, working with the staff and administration of the borough and under the advisement of the council and the mayor, the Climate Action Committee is going to use the findings of this report to develop proposed climate action recommendations to present for the coming year. So this is kind of the start of this recurring process where we get our data, we see how we did, we use these findings to make informed recommendations, we vet them for budget impacts and, you know, capacity, and then we work with our department heads and administration, prepare some recommendations for the council to hopefully be approved and adopted in the coming budget. So this kind of report is supposed to create accountability, so we can see how we're doing, and that can help us make good choices and plan for the future. The last couple slides, if you just want to go, I have a happy-to-take questions. And then for anyone that's interested, the next slide has a bunch of resources. These are the previous reports and resolutions. You can find all the backstory for the climate action process here. So thanks for listening. I appreciate the council and the mayor's support and the support of the administration in the work that the Climate Action Ad-Hoc Committee has done. A number of the committee members are here tonight. Thank you for joining and making, being a part of this long-term and ongoing effort. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Great report, and more importantly, great work that's being done. And I will let you manage the questions and comments.
Okay. Let's go around the table again.
I just want to say that this is tremendous progress you've made. Really, really good. And it's only going to take, again, a continued effort to continue to make progress.
That's the idea.
I appreciate everything you've done, and I think it's all worthwhile.
Thank you.
Very valid. Thank you very much.
I appreciate that.
Good presentation, too.
Thank you.
Rachel, one thing I do like about what your committee's doing is you're not actually mandating anything and putting a burden on homeowners or renters or building owners, whatever. You're showing people what should be done, and you're kind of trying to point them in the right direction, which I think is brilliant. What I also like is that you're moving Madison in a direction that I think a lot of European countries are already there. You know, we tend to have a reluctance to change the way we do things, but I'm fortunate to have a lot of friends that have come from, you know, like Belgium and France and whatnot. And the things that we're doing here, they've been doing for a long time, and they're light-years ahead of us, and they say, "Why don't you guys do it?" You know, so I really admire what this plan does. I believe it's doing it in the right way, and it's not going to really put a financial burden on anybody. It's just some good common sense guidelines. Well, thank you for that.
Thanks. We do have a lot of catch-up that we're playing here now, and now's the time to do it, because no time like the present. We can only, we have to accelerate, in fact, to try to make up for lost time.
And like I've said before, you know, what we're doing now, you know, I'll benefit from it, but it's really the kids down the road that are going to benefit the most.
Agreed. Thank you. Tom?
Thanks, Rachel. I agree with what Bob said, too, but a little contrary to what Bob said, and you have this in the full report, which I glanced at, that we want to adopt green building policies for new projects. So I don't know if we mandate it or how we're going to actually implement that new construction, new projects will have some standards that should be met. And they'll be good standards that will benefit the projects long-term, just like we're doing. We're putting ourselves first as a borough with our upgrades and our facilities to prove that this could be economically efficient, environmentally efficient, and then with some education, which you're providing, too. Very, it's a lot of work.
So the way the Green Building Ordinance works, it's based on, again, a Sustainable Jersey action with a model resolution. And the way it's set up is to require the consideration of certain practices, right? It doesn't say you have to install a certain kind of system, a certain kind of hot-water heater, or install solar panels, but it ideally would ask any builder to consider your options. And then paired with the education component, hopefully, people have the tools they need to make good judgments.
And you have heard me say this before, that if there's some feasibility in the future to incentivize some of these moves, you know, maybe you're going to prove to them that it's going to be more economically viable for their homes, but we might also nudge them a little bit, too. You know, people are moving to electric cars also because they think they're going to save money on their fuel costs moving forward if they're big commuters, and the maintenance costs of their cars, and helping the environment, because they're maybe cleaner. There's some, that's...
The, I mean, the savings are incontrovertible. I mean, the, some of the findings in the full report are, you know, the savings in fuel costs for the municipal fleet show us that it actually makes sense to retire some of our traditional gas vehicles early and replace them with EVs, because the savings is, you know, it's proven. And so that one, I mean, I think we've reached a tipping point in the market for EVs, and there's not a whole lot of controversy left with people that are just, you know, shopping for the cars that are the most fun to drive, the best performance, and the cheapest to maintain, right? That's kind of how it's going. But it's a little bit harder with building systems. People don't have an emotional connection to their heating system or their hot water, you know? So that's where the education component comes in. And I do think that in the coming recommendations, we will talk about ways that the borough can take it to the next level and perhaps have incentives that help people think twice about, you know, choosing a different system because of something the borough can offer.
And then the last thing I want to just reiterate is, we're not forcing, like Bob said, everybody to do this. We're just recommending it because we think it's a good thing for the future of our whole community, and then obviously, it'll spread and be maybe good, like the Europeans are more aggressive than us. Like Bob said, they're already thinking about that, and they have to. They don't really have any of their own fuel in their own countries.
Yeah.
They're even more challenged than we are.
I mean, the thing that's going to, I think, help people to look at new kinds of equipment, whether it's vehicles or building systems, is that modern, clean, healthy equipment is, you get more comfort, more control. In the case of a car, it's often got more features, it's more fun to drive. But even in your, you know, my hot-water heater right now takes the heat out of my basement and puts it into my hot-water tank. So my basement's being air-conditioned, and all that free energy that I don't want in my basement is going into my water, and I'm washing my dishes with it, right? Like, it's a two-for-one. When people realize that, it's really compelling. So I think the more we can do to help people understand, excuse me, understand the benefits of these new kinds of machines, I think, you know, the time will come when it's like the obvious choice. Thanks, Tom.
Rachel, I would just say thank you for, thanks to you and your committee for putting Madison in the leadership position to impact change at a local level, because that's where it has to begin. So thank you.
Thanks, John. Yeah, I'll just mention briefly, I was invited by the West Orange Environmental Commission to present to them a couple of weeks ago on our plan, because they wanted to know how they could implement a similar program in West Orange. We made a presentation like that to Mendham a couple of months ago. So the idea here is to, you know, start a ripple effect and get the whole region doing stuff like this, and that's how we really make big change. So thanks, John. That's it, mayor, I think, for questions.
All right. All right. Thank you very much, and again, thank you for your leadership and spreading the word.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we will move on to the Audit and Corrective Action Plan. CFO, Jim Burnett.
Thank you, mayor. This will be very brief. As Councilman Forte explained, tonight we have the corrective action plan. The audit has been posted on RoseNet. It's out, it's been finalized. The corrective action plan is a state statute-mandated action that we must take, that I present to you and that we discuss the, or I present to you the findings of the audit, and then the corrective action that we would take. The first, as Councilman Forte mentioned at the last meeting, is adequate segregation of duties. This is one that 95% of municipalities get, 95% municipalities cannot resolve, because we may collect a couple of dollars for an open request in the police department, but we don't have a separate cashier there. And if we were to have a centralized cashier, let's say here in Hartley Dodge, someone would have to go to the police department, get an invoice, come here, pay the $2, go back to the police department, or even just inside the building. It's not feasible. More and more people are paying with credit cards, so the possibility of there being an issue is minimized every day. So the segregation of duties is a finding, and our corrective action is that none is going to be taken because it's not financially feasible to do it, and that's been our answer for a number of years. The second is that animal control receipts from the health department were not turned over to the finance department within the 48-hour timeframe, when we'll just work with the health department to make sure that happens going forward. So with that, the corrective action plan, which was given to council, asks for it to be adopted, and that would happen via Consent Agenda Resolution R. 191-2023. And that's it for me, mayor.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Jim? And Jim, you can manage it if there are any.
I don't see any, mayor.
All right. But thank you. And again, as you mentioned, these are, the 190 is to accept the audit, and 191 is the corrective action plan, our consent agenda. Thank you for your great work, and we will now move on. This is normally when we have ordinance for hearing, but there were no ordinances introduced at the last meeting, so we have none for hearing. So we are now on to our second invitation for public comment. This is when you may comment on any topic. The other guidelines apply, that you step up to lectern, state your name and address, write the same on the clipboard, and try to keep your comments to three minutes, but we will give you a one-minute grace period. Anyone wishing a comment, please step forward.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jessica Murray, and I live at 27 Academy Road. And I just wanted to say a few words about the Drew Forest from the perspective of a resident and a young person. So during my freshman year of college at UMass Amherst, I started doing a lot more walking, especially by our campus pond and garden as a way to get away from work and get away from screens a little bit. So coming back home from college, I was particularly happy to rediscover the Drew Forest, which I had visited before as a younger kid, as a great place to go on similar walks. And I think that spending some time in nature can be really good for mental health, so I feel very lucky to have a public space so close to home that I can use for that purpose. And I'm also glad that the students at Drew have access to that kind of opportunity on their campus as well. So thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much, Jessica. Thank you for enjoying the forest. Anyone else wishing a comment, please step forward.
Claire Whitcomb, 12 Fairwood Road. I just wanted to inquire about the waiver-early-place plans, because I remember at a council meeting, we found out that the Cook Avenue thing was going out to bid, and that the Green Committees hadn't seen it, and then we sat down with Bob Vogel, and that's what resulted in rain gardens, and that's what resulted in Tom Solakki doing a very thoughtful and innovative tree plan for the thing. We looked at where the drains were coming down from the roofs, and there was a lot of collaboration, and I think typically that we get consulted at some point, and I just was wondering what point that was. So thank you.
Mayor, I actually just had a correspondence with Bob Vogel about that, and he confirmed that committee input and review was welcome anytime, and so, and he mentioned that the mayor and Lisa Ellis were going to be working to convene another stakeholder meeting. But separately from that, I think that the time would be now to circulate those plans to the Green Committee, so I'll check back with Bob Vogel and confirm that we can get some feedback ASAP.
That's great. I think the problem is there's no trigger for us. We don't know it's happening. So like, when we get site plans, Fran Boardman says, "There's a site plan in your mailbox," and I go get it. So, sorry, mayor.
Yeah. And that's all right. We've got two concepts in the pipeline, and so we can get input on both, but the stakeholder meeting will help guide the final design and then tweak in the green infrastructure. Anyone else wishing a comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we now move on to the introduction of ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading. Have a hearing date set for July 24, 2023. All published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
And again, a reminder that the hearings are held July 24, because there is not a July 10 meeting. I call up ordinances for first reading, ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title. Ordinance 36-2023.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $95,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a truck and accessories for the fire department.
Mayor, I'll move ordinance 36-2023.
Second.
Time for discussion. This is part of the capital budget. All right. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range? Oh, I'm sorry. He's absent tonight, sorry. Mr. Harlan Pootis?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
I have to abstain. I'm reading the resolution.
No, this is yours.
Or this is just yours?
No.
Shows how much I paid attention. Yes.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Ordinance 37-2023.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $13,600 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of new sets of firefighter turnout gear.
Mayor, I move ordinance 37-2023.
Second.
Again, this is part of the capital budget. Any other comments or questions? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Harlan Pootis?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
Ordinance 38-2023.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $700,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for renovations of the Hartley Dodge Memorial Building.
Mayor, I move ordinance 38-2023.
Second.
And again, this is related to the completion or the renovation of the East Wing. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Harlan Pootis?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 39-2023.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $400,000 from the Water Capital Improvement Fund for renovations of the Hartley Dodge Memorial Building.
Mayor, I move ordinance 39-2023.
Second.
And this is also related to the East Wing. Any other questions or comments from council? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Harlan Pootis?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
Right. Ordinance 30-2023.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $45,000 from the Municipal Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Trust Fund for a park's improvement plan.
Mayor, I move ordinance 40-2023.
Second.
And this is in the pipeline for quite a while, so if you're wishing, any other comments from council?
Yeah, I'll just time in briefly on that first page. It's going to be, um, RSC, it's going to be... This is very, um, RFP between a qualified master of architecture and senior or other professional. We work with the community to develop a park management plan for selected parks. And the, so that will include the Hartley Park, the Hill Park, the St. Louis Park, and Central Green, which is clustered by the park devices. As the first four parks, we reviewed, um, we did community members about the three parts and to develop improvement plans.
Thank you for the background. Any other comments? Roll call vote, please. Yes. Now we'll move on to the Consent Agenda Resolution. Do you want to first read the statement? Hey, any council discussion or any that needs to be pulled? Okay, roll call vote, please. All right. There is no one for this business. We'll move on to the approval of the options. Do you want to first read each of the options, please? Any questions? Roll call vote, please. All right, under new business, I'd like to make the following announcement in respect to council confirmation. The Board of Health on expired four-year terms in December 31, 2023. Patrice Payara, sixth, office number two member. And then the UCL Advisory Committee on expired three-year terms in December 31, 2023. Michael Bianchi, Veronica Ware, regular member. The Parks Advisory Committee on expired three-year terms in December 31, 2023. Carrie Tierney, at Grove Street. On the motion to approve. Paul Seaman?
Aye.
All right. Mr. Forte?
Motion to adjourn.
Paul Seaman?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all for putting up with my head on the screen there and just put up with the, uh, the noise there. Take them off.